Ok. Hey guys! Welcome to part 2 of our adventure in Diponia. Uh, for now, let's look around the city. Let's check for the girl... ...that fell off the freight train? Garbage train? Whatever the hell that was. Let's check everything and... We'll get something going.
Hmm, locked. Huh. It can probably be opened from the inside. The windshield is encrusted with dirt. Ah, there's a sign. Maybe the name of the driver? Surepuff. That could spell anything.
I'm sure it's not Surepuff.
Oh great. The rust bucket's dead, but the lock is still working.
No idea what this rust bucket is.
Ah, Miss Hinkle lost her dachshund. Well, I'm sure it'll turn up. I mean, there wasn't much kerosene in the turbine after all. Toro! Hey, I said Toro! If anything, he seems even more bored now. You have to be age 6 or older to use this device. Oh, how boring is that?
Okay, um, anyway, let's go to the... Village Center, I guess.
What's going on here? I haven't seen such a crowd in front of the town hall since... Well, since... Since the mayor wanted to introduce a tax on the lack of political commitment.
And why would he do that? Yeah, let's go to the town hall. Let's see what's coming out. Into the town hall.
Please form a line, people. Draw a waiting...
Draw a waiting number, and the mayor will see you in a short while.
What's going on here? Did someone refill the peanut jar?
A girl fell from the sky. They say she's a real beauty. The mayor is about to decide who's going to give her shelter.
Yeah, well, I doubt he'll have a hard time to decide once he's heard my story. I saved that girl from the dark exjekor. I am responsible for her.
Nice try, buddy, but I've made up a good story too. Mine even has a dragon in it. So move to the back of the line and draw a number like everyone else.
Okay, so there's gonna be some things to do. There's dispenser.
Eight lines.
That is, we need to use it.
Number 66! Almost my lucky number.
Almost. Um, here we have some magnets. Let me take them. Nice. Nice, we stole the magnet. Opening hours.
The post office will be open... A clock? A clock? What a clock. There's something missing here.
We'll have to find it.
Every office needs a good soul. Maybe someone should tell the mayor.
He's a real bastard.
Hello, Lottie.
You too.
Y- you too? Dear me, what a day!
Hmm... Yeah, where's the girl?
Where's the girl from Elysium?
Princess Sugar... Princess Sugarbottom? Oh, she's lying around in the assembly hall. Of course, I knew you came because of her. It's always the same. A beautiful young girl in a tight jumpsuit falls from the sky heavily injured, and immediately, everyone's falling over themselves to help her. Hussy! Hussy!
Okay. So... Can I see the mayor?
I wanna see the mayor.
Everyone... Everyone does. Take a number and wait your turn.
Yeah, maybe I can make an exception and let me in before the others.
Can you make an exception and let me in before the others?
It's your turn when you-
Your number comes up!
No exceptions.
Not even for me?
Especially not for you!
Nice voice.
But the line isn't moving at all. Who's next anyway?
Number 62. I think that's Wenzel.
Wenzel is also applying? But Wenzel isn't even here!
Well, it's his turn. Wenzel is up next.
No exceptions!
Yeah... Hmm...
I officially want to deregister my residence here on Diponia.
Although a lot of people will be glad to hear that. Me, for instance.
That won't be possible today!
The mayor is pretty busy at the moment.
Hmm, okay, I'm going in.
I'll skedaddle.
Don't let the door hit you.
Hmm... Mayor?
Stop right there! Where do you think you're going?
I'll go to Elysium with Goal.
In that case, you're in the wrong place! This door leads to the mayor's office, and access is strictly by numbers only.
So draw a number or bugger off!
Okay. Post office?
Stop right there! The posta-
The post office is closed until further notice.
Until when?
Until the sign says "Then it's open!"
But there's no clock there.
Very observant, and now...
Get away from that door!
Nice. Assembly hall.
Goal! I have to talk to her. She's gotta know who her savior is.
Of course I can't do anything.
Rufus, do you have to snoop around here?
Hi Inspector Gizmo.
That's Doctor Gizmo. As you know, I hold all three positions in this emergency station. And right now, I'm a doctor. And as a doctor, I have the right to ask: Why are you bothering my patient?
She's an acquaintance of mine. I wanted to see how she's doing.
Her name is Goal. So, the Elysian is an acquaintance of yours, eh? Very funny. Well, as long as your lacking sense of reality doesn't keep me from doing my job. Knock yourself out! Look after your acquaintance, but make it snappy.
My god, it's... Oh, scary.
Rufus! That's enough!
Do what? Come on!
Enough daydreaming for today. My patient needs rest. Well, at least I guess that she needs rest. In order to know for sure, she would have to wake up first.
She's unconscious. What's wrong with her? What does she need?
To be more conscious, obviously. For further tests, she would have to be awake. Unfortunately, none of my remedies seem to work.
Well, how about some really strong coffee?
The coffee that can be of help here needs to be brewed.
Doesn't every coffee need to be brewed?
Yes, right, but-
Hey, not to worry Doctor Gizmo. I have a plan.
Do the world a favor and spare us your plans, Rufus. Your wacky plans have never done anyone any good. Except that the mayor granted be a larger file cabinet for patients' histories.
Okay, I understand. Can we talk to her?
Hey, Goal! Goal! Wakey, wakey! Fast asleep.
Very good diagnosis, doctor.
Oh, well, you know, it's just that I'm an expert in... Sleep.
Yeah, I'm sure about that.
How peacefully she sleeps. This calls for extra strong coffee.
No idea how we get it.
Gizmo is a doctor, police officer, and firefighter all at once. On his best days, he has to change professions every other second.
Okay, and let's say-
Doctor Gizmo?
What now?
Oh. Hmm, let's go everything from top to down.
Will she fully recover?
She'd need to wake up first to be able to tell.
Well, why don't you wake her up then?
Well, it's not that easy. I've already tried every stimulant I could find in my medicine cabinet. None of those were strong enough. She needs something much, much stronger.
Something much, much stronger. Sounds like a job for me! I am much, much stronger after all!
Hmm... Give me a second.
Well, thanks for your time. You're welcome.
Um, let's go to the settings. And lower a bit this. We hear a bit less music and a bit more talking, right?
Doctor Gizmo?
What now?
Hmm, yeah, we'll say her.
I will save her.
Good luck. Did you bring some kind of miracle stimulant by any chance? Something that might wake her up? A kind of cup of coffee to the nth order?
I'm working on it.
Good, but do it someplace else.
Hmm...
What can I do to wake her up again?
Nothing, unless you had a miracle stimulant to wake her up.
What are you waiting for? Help her!
I would love to, but self-professed acquaintances of the patient are constantly interrupting me in my efforts.
Self-professed acquaintances? That sounds funny. Self-professed acquaintances? Think you can say that a thousand times in a row?
Why should I? I could even say "get lost" a thousand times in a row and you wouldn't get it.
Unfortunately... I guess you're right.
Could you leave me alone with her for a moment?
No.
But-
No.
Bummer.
Hmm...
Do you have a stimulant for me?
To make you even more annoying? I don't think so. I've used up most of the stimulants on the patient, but to no avail. I still have some left in the medicine cabinet in my office, but no one except me is allowed to access it. We'll see about that. What was that?
Uh, time for me to leave.
That's what I keep telling you.
Hmm...
I want to report an emergency.
An emergency? What is it?
Fire!
Impossible! My fire protection sensors would already have detected the emergency.
You have built-in fire protection sensors?
Yes, ever since you turned 8 years old, you little brat.
That was my last birthday with my dad. I got a cake. I think I even remember the fireworks.
I remember them too. Incredible how much you achieved with just 8 candles.
I have this unusual pain in my back.
You should rest, in bed, at home. So get lost!
Okay, robbery?
Robbery!
Impossible! My theft protection sensors would already have detected the emergency.
You have built-in theft protection sensors?
All emergency prevention tasks are united in one person, and that's me, as you very well know. A small village like Kuvak is just not big enough to have a doctor's practice, a fire department, and a police station separately. Or at least, that's what I thought. Ever since you turned 8, I'm not so sure about that anymore.
No emergency.
If you say so. It sounds too good to be true.
Okay.
Well, thanks for your time.
You're welcome. Not literally.
What can we do here? Oh, we can use the doorknob. No idea how this is a doorknob. Oh, oh, okay.
The balloons seem to have been stored here for quite a while. I wonder what occasion they're meant for? And why my face is on some of them?
Okay, let's take the balloons. Um, nothing here, to the stage. Yeah, I guess that's everything, at least for now. Oh, can we use the doorknob again? Oh, it doesn't change. Okay, let's go back to the town hall. Um, okay, we can talk with those guys. My sec.
The mayor wants to decide what? Who will what? Give her shelter?
Low-Tech thinks the girl should be, um... Integrated into our community. And someone has to nurse her back to health.
I hope the mayor will choose me. She could give me a hand in the mud pits. Ever since I cut my fingertips while scrubbing rust, I tend to get infected cuticles.
You want her to scrub rust for you? That's outrageous!
Why? What do you want the girl for? Rufus?
Rufus!
Huh? What?
Oh my god. Yeah, she belongs to me.
The girl belongs to me!
That'll be determined by the mayor.
Well, how do I get to the mayor?
That's easy.
Take a number and stand at the end of the line.
Couldn't you let me cut in? See, I'm in a bit of a hurry and-
I see.
Well, if that's the case...
Do you want my chair?
Shall we get you something to drink while you're waiting?
We could bake a cake for you too.
Really? I like cactus cake. But no raisins, thanks very much. And... Oh... I see. Crap. Now I'm hungry.
A bit slower, huh?
No, really, let me go first.
Listen Rufus, a minute ago, that was a nice little joke, but now, it's half annoying.
And half sad.
Okay.
Nice hats. Did I miss a trend or something?
The roofer switched to making hats, 'cause it hasn't rained for months.
I see. And I'm sure the trousers are from the guy who used to make tarps, right?
Hey, my wife made them for me.
Well, thanks for nothing.
Hmm...
I'll skedaddle.
Guys... Maybe if I-
I'll skedaddle.
Talk with you... No.
I'll skedaddle.
They're all the same. Village Center. Where to go? Wenzel Alley... Pipe... Where is the war? Oh my god, Tony's shop. Emergency phone... Tony's house, okay, let's go. Up to bottom again. Hmm...
Huh, this is a map of the trash tunnels. I'd better ask Hannek how this all works.
Okay, bless. Well, ta-da. Dun 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 dun.
Hello?
Hello, hello! Ah, I'm starving! I've eaten nothing but worms for days now!
Ignore him. My wife sometimes talks to herself when she's down there. He must have picked that up from her.
We can't meet anymore! Although my husband is almost deaf, his bird has quite good ears.
Nice parrot.
Good one.
Yes, we use it to detect dangerous fumes in the mineshaft.
Oh, what do you do when that happens?
We get a new parrot.
I see.
Oh, you bastard. That's nice. Don't know what is this, but it's nice.
Hey, shouldn't he be maintaining the sewer system and removing trash landslides? Cah, lazy bum. Hello, Hannek.
Oh, hey, uh-
Rufus?
Exactly.
Why aren't you working?
You mean, why am I doing just the same as you? Because some joker removed the magnets from the detonation plan, that's why.
Hey, I am very busy actually. I've been running around all day, getting things done, and, uh, picking stuff up. And, and, and things like that.
Well... How about you find some new magnets for our detonation plan? Then we can finally continue work.
Yeah, got magnets, we'll try.
How exactly does that detonation plan of yours work?
Well, that's pretty exciting actually.
Yeah, I doubt it.
The chief detonator uses magnets to mark the positions of the next three planned detonations. Then, he rings a bell, and I give a signal to the miner, who will on his part prepare the explosives in the mineshaft. And after that, we blow the thing up.
And then you start with the exciting part?
Um, no. That's it actually.
I knew it.
Hmm...
What exactly are you guys doing down there?
What do you think? We are trash hunters. We search for useful trash. Most of the time, trash is just junk, and so, pretty useless. For instance, I have a whole collection of car keys for cars that have been scrapped ages ago.
Oh...
Maybe you have my key too?
I don't know. What was your name again?
Hmm...
Forget it.
Okay.
Done! Anything else?
Got an idea?
Is that your parrot?
Yes, we use it to detect dangerous-
Oh, what do you do in-
We get a new-
Alright.
Did you hear about the woman from Elysium?
Yes, but I really don't care. I already have a woman I can send into the mineshaft. It's too narrow in there for two women.
Love must be such a wonderful thing.
Okay.
Uh, talk to you later.
See you, uh-
Rufus?
Exactly.
Hmm hmm... Hmm hmm... Haven't missed anything. Let's go to Lonzo's bar.
Ah, Rufus. I thought you're on your way to Elysium. Have you come back to pay your tab?
Oh, that. Oh, well, listen Lonzo, I, uh, I planned to do that, but constructing an escape vehicle costs a lot, and, uh-
Don't worry Rufus. No one here expected you to make it.
Oh, ah, great. Thanks, that's nice.
Nice bar. A bit small, on the inside, but... I guess they managed somehow.
Yeah, sure. As if it was even possible to hit that board with a dart.
And we still can. Ah, I love it. A curtain... Pipe?
That's piss, the only thing to drink on the planet. Not true. Luckily, I'm not susceptible to advertising. I could do with a steak now.
Oh, we can just take... The sign. Wonder what, maybe for the bull?
What's that supposed to be? Is Lonzo building a cactus press? Or a faster mixer? Impossible. He would surely have asked me to help.
Let's talk with him.
Lonzo?
Yeah?
Long time no see Lonzo.
Long time indeed.
Anything new?
Hey, you know how Kuvak is. Nothing ever happens in Kuvak.
Yep, without me, this place would be dead.
Well, without you, there would be fewer explosions, I know that much.
It must be pretty sad for all of you that I'll be gone soon.
It's almost unbearable. Almost.
How about a shot of that old worry be gone?
Well, that depends. Will you ever pay me what you owe?
Of course! I just need to get some money first. But you know that I'm always true to my word.
If you find a new word that makes you look less like a fraud.
Well said Lonzo, well said.
Said but true.
Did you hear about the stranger? The girl?
Yes, but I don't care. Don't tell me you want to start quarreling about her with all the other idiots.
Well, you know me. I'm always the first in line when, uh-
Idiots are quarreling.
Yes. Said but true.
Do you have something that can give someone a real boost?
Since when are you ordering coffee? Did you break Tony's coffee machine again? How often do I have to tell you that you don't filter oil that way?
No, this is not about simple coffee. I need something that really, really gets you awake. A kind of ultimate pick-me-up. Lonzo? Are you okay? Okay, just forget I ever asked. I'm off.
No, no, wait a minute! I think I know exactly what you need. Oh boy! This is it! This is the moment I've been waiting for!
Hey! Wow! You have pipes? Tanks? Valves? It's a... It's a... A wa- It's a thing!
This is an espresso machine. But this is not just any old espresso machine. This is the mother of all espresso machines. I tuned it myself.
And you wound ribbons into its hair?
Indeed I did.
Okay, but one question remains. What exactly is this espresso?
Well, to be honest, I'm not sure myself. I think it's a kind of highly concentrated coffee. The people of prehistoric times drank it.
Uh-huh, and then they forgot to switch the machine off. I see.
I built the compressor, following all the instructions that I found. Unfortunately, the pictures were pretty blurry, but I think I figured out what ingredients are needed. Take the recipe. It's right next to you on that bar stool. If you bring me these ingredients, we can start brewing. In the meantime, I'll have found my life insurance policy. I hope- Oh, I'm so excited!
Okay.
What a sprawl. Okay, I need clear reviving and energy-rich water. The coffee powder must be black, stimulating, and made from hot beans. None of these things can be found in Kuvak. I never mind that. Being a master improviser, I bet I can find plenty of alternatives. Hmm... Lonzo's been trying his luck as a handyman. The cup is still empty. Still being the operative word here. Lonzo must have waited very long for this historic day. He should have asked me earlier!
Hmm, shame, a shame. Killer cup.
This must be for the water.
Okay.
Uh, what exactly am I supposed to do?
It's all written down on the recipe I gave you. Just bring me everything that's on the list. Till then, I'll do some fine tuning on the espresso machine.
Okay.
Hmm...
About the powder?
Tell me.
Do you have any idea what kind of blackish powder is needed for this recipe?
I have no idea. I don't think they're talking about black powder.
Black powder. Hmm...
I said, it's probably not black powder.
But black powder is blockish.
Listen. This machine works with high pressure and extreme heat if you put black powder into the-
Yada, yada, yada. Let me worry about the ingredients and you'll prepare the machine.
Oh no. I'm starting to regret this.
Yeah, you shouldn't do it. Um, I have idea about some of those things.
I can't wait to fire up this sweet machine for a test brew.
About the water.
Keep it flowing.
Clean water? Where can I get clean water?
Clean water is a meal. Everybody knows that.
My father always told me that story about how he founded Kovak on top of a source of fresh, clean spring water.
Hogwash. Your father was a bullshitter, just like you.
Bullshitter? What's that supposed to mean?
Someday, someone will explain it to you in detail, I'm sure.
Someday. Hmm, okay. I have some ideas.
You do that. I'll be here if you need me.
No? Um, did I miss something? Go straight?
And that's probably where the powder goes.
Okay, clear cup, Lonzo, espresso cup, and nothing more. Okay, to the alley.
Huh? What was that? Oh, the emergency station is open again. That must mean I can choose the more daring options now.
Oh, oh. Yeah, emergency station. It's really open. Liver. Doctor's cabinet. Oh, you can take it, I hope. Okay, drill also. Something else? Can we? Ah, we can. Bottle filled with laughing gas. No idea why, but we've got it. Can we open the doctor's cabinet?
Crap, locked. Distrust everywhere.
Hmm. I know detector scalpel.
Luckily, I'm a gifted lockpicker. Damn, that would have been a piece of cake with the right tool.
Oh my god, he's so stupid. Hmm, drill.
Luckily, I'm a gifted lockpicker. Damn, that would have been a piece of cake with the right tool.
Yeah. Okay.
That means I can fiddle around with his occupation modes.
Something happened?
It looked much lighter lying in that cupboard. Nothing else to pillage.
Um. Hmm. Oh, and there's a lockpick inside. Ha, 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 ha. Can I take it?
That's not gonna flee. I'll save my telekinetic powers for later.
Yes, also no. Dart?
Although I could hit them for sure, I'll never be able to get them down that way.
Uh-huh. Okay, lever down. Fire extinguisher.
It's too heavy to lug around. Doesn't matter though, because I'm always cautious.
Okay, who can use it also? Okay.
It's the last tree left. I hope it doesn't croak. I mean, where would I test my herbicides?
We will kill it. I'm 100% sure.
There's a hole in the platform. If the fetters weren't so wide, I could attach them to the hole over there. Ah, but they are too wide. It's too heavy to lug around. Doesn't matter though, because I'm always cautious. Boy, how often did people around me carry that thing screaming like babies?
What? Um.
Boy, how often did people around me carry that thing screaming like babies?
Um. Um, not what I wanted, but wait. Better than.
There's a hole in the platform.
Hmm.
That's not gonna flee. That's not gonna flee.
Can I use something?
That's not gonna flee.
No.
That's not gonna flee.
Hmm.
It's too heavy to lug around. Doesn't matter though, because I'm always cautious.
What am I supposed to?
Boy, how often did people around me?
Nope. Nope. Never mind, let's go. Mama, 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 detonation plan? And the magnets? Hmm. Oh my god. Um, no freaking idea. Hmm. And what if we try to? Lower those guys have gone. I'm sure it was this, this. And I really have no idea where was the last one. Last one was somehow used it, I believe. Um. This?
Oh, the blast signal. Take cover! Imminent blast!
No. That's not the right one. Oh, but I can't change it, so I guess it was the right one. Hmm. Ah, they are gone. And we get the waiting number.
I would have earned the one, but I guess the 63 will have to do.
Hmm. So I still need to get Wenzel, right?
I think it's my turn now.
Wrong! You'll be...
You'll be after the next. It's Wenzel's turn before that. But Wenzel isn't even here!
THAT'S WHY IT ISN'T YOUR TURN YET!
Oh yeah, that's so typical. Even when he's not around, Wenzel's always holding me back.
Okay. Um. At least we took care of those guys. Let's go to Tony's house. Hmm. Doorbell and chili pepper.
Ouch!
Asbestos gloves. Please keep them. Yeah. Can I do something about it?
Maybe with this. Yikes!
Nope. So, no idea for now. Go to the house. And...
Well, I think that's all. Should be enough. The good old sofa. Too bad I can't fit it into my escape pod. I've had the most amazing ideas sitting here.
Hmm.
Well, I should. And Tony keeps complaining that I don't do enough.
Okay, can we use the red curtain?
I can still recognize what it is, so I don't have to clean it.
Kinda true, kinda.
I'm not sticking my hand in there again!
Okay, we have them both?
Well, I think that's all. Should be enough.
Also no. Still can't get to the first aid kit. Oh, but there are some things here. Three things to be perfectly clear. Fire torch, dud, and funnel. And I have an idea. After talking to the doctor, he said there was some... Stuff with it.
Luckily, I'm a gifted lockpicker. Damn.
Yeah. Gifted as hell. Let's try here. And here. And... How about this? The tree.
I don't want to waste all of my explosive mojo at once.
Hmm. Maybe not. Maybe not. So let's go to Tony's. Not, 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 not... Wenzel's house.
This is Wenzel's house. He'll be flabbergasted when he hears about my newest adventure. I bet he'll be pretty disgruntled, cuz he decided not to come with me. He'll start shaking and get crying fits. Why am I not as cool and daring as you, Rufus? I also want to experience such great excitement. But deep down in his heart, he knows that he just isn't cut out for this. He'll get seriously depressed. Oh, boy, I really hope he's home.
Wenzel! So stupid.
Hey Rufus, back already? That was really fast this time.
Yeah, yeah, this time, I almost made it. Unfortunately, like so often, my human kindness got in my own way.
Of course. That darn human kindness of yours, it's always getting into your way, right?
Indeed.
You never get anything done anymore.
Well, there are just too many humans.
They should all be.
Drowned in the Red Rust Sea. Exactly.
That darn human kindness. By the way, thanks for all your stuff.
What? Wait, isn't that my chest?
Well, you said I could have your stuff if your plan works out.
But...
And your plan did work out. You just said so yourself, didn't you?
Yes, yes, but, but...
Well, that's settled then.
Or once. At least once. I'm not the one stealing stuff here.
Have you heard about that woman from Elysium?
Who hasn't? This wouldn't have anything to do with you by any chance.
Hey, you know me. Wherever there's a woman that needs rescuing, I'm there.
You're right. There really does seem to be a connection.
I was there when the girl fell from the sky.
It's alright. I'm sure it was just an accident.
No, you're getting this all wrong. I saved her.
Of course you did.
Don't you wanna go to the town hall?
To apply forgiving shelter to the Elysian woman? The thought has crossed my mind. I even got a waiting number, but then I thought, what have I got to offer?
Yeah, nothing.
If I were rich or found a water vein, I might have a chance, but like this.
By the way, you're holding up the line.
So what? As long as I haven't found a water vein, I don't even have to show up.
Okay.
How the hell did you manage to open the trunk?
Well, all you have to do is disengage the childproof lock, but the only thing in there was this weird stick.
Oh.
That's my father's divining rod.
Ya think so? Legend has it that it always brought him luck. He found the water vein Kovak's built on with this very rod.
Yeah, if my father really always had that much luck, then why didn't he manage to take me along when he left Deponia?
Eh, I haven't the slightest idea.
Hey, maybe you can find water with the divining rod?
And where pray tell would I start to look? In my basement? I should say that's highly improbable.
So there will we find it. I'm sure about it.
Maybe you can help me organize a few things.
Again? You haven't even returned my lawnmower yet.
Oh yes, the lawnmower. You'd better get a new one. The old one had lousy aerodynamics.
What is it this time?
Do you have any idea where I can get revitalizing fluid?
I once heard that it is supposed to be revitalizing to drink the blood of a bull.
You believe everything people tell you, don't you?
Like I'll get back the money that I loaned you?
Exactly.
Uh, okay. Hmm, I have idea about most of the things, but no idea about the blackish powder, but...
I think I... Let's be honest, you were never a...
Whatever you say.
Never a big help. Brilliant.
What?
You don't get it? Not a big help. Because you're small!
Yeah, hmm, I'm shocked.
Later.
Exactly.
Not funny. Not funny.
Hey, that's my dad's divining rod.
Don't even think about it, Rufus. It's mine now.
But it's a family heirloom.
So, a gift is a gift. Boy, I can hardly wait to give it a try. Maybe I can find a well somewhere near.
Yeah.
And once I'm rich?
We'll split fifty-fifty. I might lend you the rod for a couple of hours.
Hmm, 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 hmm. Let's go to the bathroom. Hmm, yeah, let's take the sponge. Um. Only the furnace left. And we open it. And what? Open and close. Right. Can we start a fire there?
It's attached firmly. Boy, it's attached firmly.
Um, oh. Maybe I don't understand something? Let's go to the basement then. What we've got here? Only pipe.
My impeccable sense of orientation doesn't fail me. I should be under the shower right now.
Only this? Let's try. Okay, and that's everything. So I guess that's how we'll get him to find the water?
Don't even think about it. It's mine.
But it's a family.
So, boy, I can... Maybe, and one...
We'll split fifty-fifty. I might lend you the rod for a couple of...
Okay, we're just under the shower. Um, maybe now?
Boy, it's attached firmly.
Nope. And I can't use the shower anyhow.
Hey, Wenzel.
What's up?
Hmm.
I want my heirloom back.
A deal is a deal.
Oh, come on. We're friends, aren't we?
And friends stay true to their word.
Nope.
Oh yeah? And that's written down where exactly?
Just forget it.
Hmm.
Later.
Exactly.
Hmm, 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 hmm. Back to Tony's house. I've got an idea.
I don't like the direction this is taking at all.
And we've got the wet sp... Oh. We've got the wet sponge, and we go here. Yeah, and we've got few things to do. Let's start with this. So we know the name, and maybe get the key from the...
Is this really necessary?
Annette?
The seats are covered in tasteless pink leatherette. A puppet is pirouetting in the corner, and on the driver's sign it says, "Sugar Puff." Stupid name.
Okay, so we know the name, so maybe we will get the key? Now, let's... Then this tree?
And today, children, Uncle Rufus will show you how to draw a bull. And this is one way how not to do it.
Hmm.
You have to be age six. Toro! Hey, I said Toro! If anything, he seems even more...
Okay, he's bored. Um, red curtain?
Toro! Hey, I said Toro! What, what good is it being the best of matadors if the bull isn't even looking?
Okay, no.
Ah, uh-huh. Brilliant idea, Rufus. What could a lonesome bull crave more than a well-chilled glass of nat's piss? Okay, I'll use the cow. Main thing is that it worked. I can still hear Tony's laughter. I'll never try riding a bull in love ever again. That's below my class.
Okay. And the red curtain now?
Toro! Hey, I said Toro! What, what good is it being the...
No.
Aw, does that upset you? Well, an accomplished matador like me knows how to bring the blood of a bull to a boil, or whatever liquid it is that's pumping through those tubes.
Um. Why?
One more time.
I wanted to get the liquid. Then this drill?
And today, children, and...
No. Dark.
The bull is enraged enough. Time for a rodeo! The bull is enraged enough. Time for a rodeo!
Um, detector scalpel?
And today, children, and...
No. So maybe again a rodeo?
One more time.
Um... Guess I need to do something else, but in a moment. For now, let's go to him. And try to get the key to the car.
Hello again!
Hey, um, uh-
Rufus?
Exac-
Hmm...
About my key again?
Again? Well, if you insist. What was your name again?
Sugarpuff.
Sugarpuff.
Sugarpuff? Hmm, maybe I found your key, Sugarpuff. But I need to be sure it really belongs to you. What's your favorite color?
I'm pink.
Pink, you say? That sounds about right. And, uh, do you have a special hobby?
Hmm... Yeah, there was the ballet mascot or something.
I, uh, love the ballet.
Ballet?
Bullseye! Then this must be your key! This must be your lucky day, Sugarpuff!
Yeah? I'm so happy I could just explode!
Really? I might have a one-time job for you down in the mine.
Okay, we got the key, we got the key. I want to try something in the station. Exactly, we have the handcuffs. And can we use the dot to get the handcuffs? Um... Guess not. Maybe I can't use that hand torch with this?
That's not gonna flee. Boy, how often did people around-
Um... My god.
If I weld it shut, I'll never be able to-
Okay. Okay. So you won't help me. And I can't really take the parrot with me. Uh, let's go to the car. We now have the key, right? And there's the lever. And that, the hood. And we hit the battery.
So much power in such a heap of junk. What a waste.
Can we take it?
I can't remove- But how do I get access to the power that's harbored within them?
Okay, so I think this might be the en- energy recovery one of the fluids we need.
I want the battery acid, and I have a dentist's drill. That's almost too convenient! Ah, ow! Yeah, ow!
Uh-huh. So... Need to get it somehow?
What I need here is some kind of- Unfortunately, I already used the urn of Tony's mother's ashes for my underwater barbeque.
Oh my god, you bastard. Okay, um, windshield, lever, drop the door. We can only close it?
The seats are covered, a puppet is- And on the drop- Sugar-
Um, nothing more I can do. Can't get the acid. Hmm...
Well...
Hmm hmm? Something can go here into the chimney. Hmm... But no idea what. Okay, let's go to Tony's shop.
Looks like Tony's in her store. If I go in now, her time- Ah, well, what the heck. Let's get this over with.
Sorry mate.
Well, 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 look who's back. If it isn't Evel Knievel, the man who defied gravity, the conqueror of the sky, the wind jockey, the traveler on his way to the upper spheres. And yet, here he stands, right in front of me. Who'd have thought?
Believe it or not, this time I really made it! I was on board an Organon cruiser. Its destination? Elysium.
And then the longing for me became too much to bear.
I had to choose a life of eternal bliss, which means far away from you, or saving a beautiful Elysian girl from a horrible death?
Yeah, right. Rufus is doing a selfless deed. I would love to laugh, but my belly's still aching from when you were dragged through the junk.
I'll show you. I'll wake the girl, and she'll take me to Elysium. And then you'll be sorry. You'll all be sorry.
Yeah, hmm... I'm sure.
How's business?
Like, uh, when did that interest you ever?
Who says I take an interest? I'm just being extremely polite.
First and foremost, you have an extremely distorted view of yourself.
Well, that's because my reflection in the mirror is so blindingly bright.
Ugh!
I would kill him. I would already kill him. Few times, I guess.
Why so cranky?
Why? You have destroyed my mailbox, devastated my backyard, gobbled down all my food supplies, and if I find out that the disappearance of my favorite pair of boots is connected in any way to the construction of your ridiculous escape pod, may God have mercy on your soul!
I had to carry the black powder in some kind of vessel, didn't I?
What?
Uh, nothing.
Black powder, boots.
I'd like to buy something.
With what? Or did you get a job recently that I don't know anything about?
I'll pay you back. Really?
Ugh!
I wanted to say goodbye before I leave this dump.
New escape plans, have we? You are deluded. You'll never get out of here. Never, ever, ever. And that means I'll have you on my back for the rest of my life.
Might be.
What are those vouchers?
They're gift vouchers. You hand them in at the post office, and they deliver the merchandise.
Cool, I'll take them.
Hey, hands off!
What?
They don't come free.
I thought they were gift vouchers! The first aid cabinet is locked.
What? Did you injure yourself again?
Not yet.
Too bad. You know what? Tell me when you have. I'll have a good long laugh, and then I'll give you the key.
Okay. Maybe the bull?
You wouldn't have some coffee somewhere around here, would you?
Since you've been staying with me, I've only had decaf. And even that is too strong. Maybe I should finally get rid of the coffee grinder? It's just using up space, like you.
Hmm...
I've gotta go.
I've been saying that for years, but here you still are!
This is where Tony's budgie cage used to hang, but he couldn't cope with her, so he skedaddled.
He died of old age.
Yeah, whatever you say.
After you accidentally infected him with progeria.
Yeah, you know, I liked my version better. Ah, terrific! The rotten smell from Sector 9 isn't so disgusting today.
What do we have? Crumb?
There isn't even one crumb left. Seems like I have to find my own ingredients.
Okay, 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 okay. Chili pepper.
One whole chili?
And that's all I have for now. Always something, right?
Weights, anchors, metal boots, hooks. All the things you need if you want to stay moored forever.
Um, what do we have here? Stuff. Uh... Hooks.
Hands off my stuff!
What?
I'm just browsing, is what paying customers do. What you mean is driving me nuts!
Hmm... Okay, we've been everywhere. Tried many things. I think this is it. It's around an hour already. Thanks for watching. See you again in the part 3.